Okay, let's call the Planning Commission of Royal Oak to order. Before we get started, we'll introduce ourselves, starting to my left.
Dan Goddak.
Charlene Douglas, Mayor Pro Tem.
Mike Fournier, Mayor.
Ann Vara.
Tim Twing, Commandant Almond Director.
Ann Bieke.
Eric Klooster.
Thank you, and welcome to our newest Planning Commission member, Ann Bieke. Thank you for being here. Next item is... Oh.
Do you want to introduce Mr. Gillum, too?
Dave Gillum, City Attorney.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate you being here. Item B is the approval of the minutes for October 9th, 2018. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Goddak.
Supporter.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Is there any discussion on those minutes?
There wasn't that meeting.
Not seen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Okay. Next item, as I see, is the public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to the Planning Commission on an item that is not on this agenda? Okay, not seen, we'll close that public comment on non-agenda items. And we are going to new business. This is a public hearing for a special land use and a site plan, SP 181128, to amend previously approved site plan to replace portion of masonry screening wall with landscaping along north rear lot line of retail store and fitness center at 555 through 595 East 13 Mile. Mr. Twing.
You should have been able to review the staff report. The site is a little bit east of Rochester Road, on 13 Mile Road, between Windermere and 13. It is its own neighborhood business. As you indicated in the read, the reason it's in front of you is the petitioner is asking to leave a portion of a required screening wall gone and replacing it with landscaping only, since that's a specific action of the Planning Commission. When it was approved, it requires your review and approval to have it remain or modify that site plan as has been gone. Basically, the portion of the site, what I have on the screen, is the entire site. To the rear or north of the building, there's a segment towards the east end of the site, just off of Windermere, that's been knocked down, and the petitioner is asking not to have to replace it. There's also a smaller portion towards the west end of the site that they are planning to replace. What they're asking the Planning Commission to consider is allowing landscaping instead of the masonry wall. Based on indication staff has received, their reasoning for that is the turning movement for the vehicles that they're bringing through there are hitting it and knocking it down. That's really the request, since it was a special land use previously as part of the review. That report is still in front of you. So there'd be two actions on it, that and the site plan review.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. Any questions from Mr. Twing? Sure, and then Ann?
Yeah, so do they have traffic out of that, their parking lot, onto the street, onto Windermere?
No.
Oh, okay. I thought you heard you say that.
Just wraps around the site, loading, unloading, or on the back side or the north side of the site, or the building.
Okay.
The access is off 13.
All right, good, thank you.
Ms. Bieke?
What was the original thinking of having a wall versus landscaping, as far as the regulations go? Because I read that it was three feet, then six feet.
When it was built, the prior ordinance, and it was in, I'm going to say, three different zoning districts at the time, it was actually done prior to my being here, so I'm not familiar with the prior discussion, but that's how fart goes back. And it was done in compliance with the code at that time.
I guess what I mean is, was it for, oh, can I speak? Noise abatement or for...
Generally...
Because whether the landscaping would have the same effect as the wall, basically, the wall had a specific...
Code requirements are generally to do two things. One, to screen objectionable views, and also to cut down noise.
I have a question. Is there any safety reason to have the wall there? From the other side? Okay.
That I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Twing? Is the petitioner here?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Douglas. So, but I want to follow up on the previous question. So, we used to have a, the code used to call for a three-foot wall. Now, the current, it calls for a six-foot wall. I mean, if they were to replace this with the contemporary, with the current zoning requirement, it would have to be a six-foot wall?
Only if you required it.
But, or, that's what?
Yeah, the discretionary item that you have is to either accept their proposal with landscaping in the berm, or to require them to put a masonry wall back, and you can determine whether that's the three feet to be consistent with what's there, or if you identify some reason, you could require it to be six feet. But I'd look for a reason.
Sure, okay, thanks.
Okay, is the petitioner here? Welcome. Could we just have your name, please?
Yes, Jeff Cahen. I'm with my brother Mike Cahen, the petitioner, and our landscape attorney, Michael Dool. And as mentioned, we're here before you, due to what we have is a problem with delivery trucks for our Dollar Tree tenants. And they've knocked down this wall about 10 times over the past five, six years. Of course, we've suggested to them that they use smaller delivery trucks, but they said it's impossible that they do multiple deliveries to multiple locations when they come in. And what's happened is Dollar Tree has complained to us about the situation, and they're threatening to leave our center if we cannot come up with a resolution. We thought that replacing the problem sections of the wall with a nice buffer plannings would give the trucks room to maneuver behind the center, and would be, actually be a nicer-looking improvement to the area. The existing berm, there's a berm behind the wall, it's about four foot high, with the new plannings would be higher than the wall that's there for screening, so there'd actually be a higher screening area, and we believe it would be much more pleasant to the eye. Again, our greatest concern is we don't want an empty building due to this situation. We hope to work with you, and we hope you can work with us to a solution. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Okay, not seen, we'll ask you to sit down. I'm going to open up a public hearing, then. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this petition? Yes, in the hat? Hello?
My name is Greg Jones, and I live at 515 East Windermere, and that's directly behind the Dollar Tree store. I sent some pictures in, and you can see that these walls have been knocked down several times. This building, back in 1984, Dennis Cowan was the Vice President of the Neighborhood Association, and they fought and came up with a reasonable berm wall, the three-foot wall, is to kind of keep debris from blowing into the neighborhood. These brick walls that keep being hit by these semi-trucks, it's not designed for a 53-foot semi-truck with a sleeper cab to come behind that. Damon Hardware has been there for years, had semi-trucks coming, but they would back up on the west side of the building, between the bank and Dollar Tree. There's a, on the east side, you'll see pictures, and there's a, they have a garage door in the back, and they used to just come out with their high-low unload, and their 24-foot trucks, and the garbage trucks could get back behind the building. It was designed for that. The berm is nice, and Jeff, he seems very sincere when he talks about taking care of it, but we've had other property management companies since Jeff, or before Jeff, that never took care of it. I would call numerous times about trimming the trees. I've seen kids get hit by branches riding their bikes. I've gone out there, I've cut the grass, I've probably cut it 10 times this summer, but I'm always taking care of that berm. It's a piece of property that's always forgotten by the landscaping company. But these walls that he hits, the semi-truck hit, on the west side of the building, there's a six-foot wall that's right on this young couple's property line. For the truck to get out, they have to knock down the wall and scrape their way out. It's not like they can make that corner. You'd have to move that wall, like I said, about six feet towards the sidewalk for a truck, the 53-foot truck to get out there. One neighbor complained that these semi-trucks were spending the night in that alley, and she heard that running all night long because her bedroom's up front. We fought hard to have it this way, and I hope you keep it this way. I understand his problem, and I hate for him to lose a tenant, but I'd hate for my neighbors to be all upset because of one tenant. And Damon Hardware was there for years, they unloaded and offloaded, they had no problems with the current land usage. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or anything?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, thank you. I'm Benjamin Malonia, and it's my wife, Monique, and we reside in the property directly east of this wall in question. If you're looking at the diagram, there's the parking lot, and there's that right angle there, yeah, right there, that would be where I park my car, where you have the cursor. My kitchen is just like about a slight inch to the right. I've sat in my kitchen and looked at the wide of the eyes of these drivers and their giant trucks trying to come through before the leaves fell. I completely understand as a homeowner, or as a property owner, the idea to, I think that my other neighbor has nailed it, that this is not by design. The wall, I pick up trash that comes through this area on a daily basis. I've owned this property since June 30th, or, sorry, July 4th, July 6th. So, my concern is that the wall was damaged when I first moved in. Since then, it's been removed, the debris from it, but not all of it. Significant amounts of it are still basically on my driveway, almost. I have no way to dispose of the chunks of concrete that I have to deal with. The other vegetation areas around the whole area, that would be what would be a four-foot wall, that's by code, that's supposed to be, would be required to be replaced, which would be directly at the first 45-degree angle going north. That's like missing, and so my whole concern is that the berm and the landscape idea is a good solution, but it's not going to fix the problem. It's like putting a Band-Aid on a broken leg, you know? It's still going to be broken. That's kind of how, I mean, I sit here and watch these trucks on a Sunday afternoon for three or four hours, try to navigate their way in and out, and then have to kind of give up because they decided they had to call. They weren't going to make their next day's deliveries, and they sleep there. It's occurred three times in the past four months, where they would sleep there, just outside my house, like over a six-foot wall, but they're right there. It's quite unusual. I view that as a safety issue, especially when the barriers are not in place, the concrete barriers, if you wanted a reason for a six-foot wall, I mean, if people are sleeping there, that are truck drivers, I mean, I understand their business, and they're there for work and all that, but it's, would create, it creates those types of concerns when it's happening on a regular basis. The noise, I mean, I'm, you know, trucks come in and out, that's part of business. I live next to commercial property. You know, my thing is, is that they're doing it, you know, at 10:00 PM on a Saturday evening, and for two hours straight, you know, on a summer afternoon. Like, I'm living in Royal Oak, that's not what I'm expecting. They're, and they're hitting all the trees.
Sir, it's been, you've been three minutes.
Oh, I didn't realize there was time limit. Okay, I just wanted to explain what goes on.
Thank you.
In this.
Thank you.
So, I do have another concern about the maintenance of the property there. So, I mean, if we are going to approve this type of thing, I would make a request that it's enforced, that it's maintained, because none of the landscaping on that property will be maintained as per the code and the regulations, as I've read.
Thank you.
Yeah. Or the approved, current approved site plans.
Anyone else? Hello?
Hello. My name is Tim Metcalf, and I'm representing me and my wife Danielle. We live at 535 East Windermere, which is directly in the middle of the alley. And I have been a lot of problems with this property ever since the Dollar Tree went there. It's, I call it the truck stop. I didn't realize that commercial vehicles, it's allowed that you can park overnight. And I've called the police on numerous occasions, about 15 times. If I had called the police every time that trucks were there running their engine, I would have called the police probably 75 times. I talked to the landlord, Jeff, he's actually seems like a good guy. And the problem is, the trucks, you're probably thinking he's joking about three or four hours, but literally, I've timed these trucks. They, it takes them a minimum of 20 or 30 minutes of them going like this. And I have seen trucks back there for hours. Two weeks ago, there was a truck that started doing that, and it got dark, and they just stopped and spent the night. That's the real issue I have of trucks, you know, they shouldn't be back there running the engine. The police will come and tell them to turn off the engine, but the police basically say there's nothing that they can do if there's no overnight, no overnight parking sign, is what they claim. I mean, maybe that's a different issue, but that's what I would like to see. Literally, I have witnessed myself, either heard it or seen it, the truck hit the wall at least 12 times. Literally, I have pictures, I didn't, I should have brought them, but the truck can barely, I mean, there's like this much on each side. I've seen numerous truckers. The last time it got hit, when this, the whole last incident happened, it was March 29th, actually, the wall's been down. There's been a 48-section foot of wall down on the back. There's about a 10-foot section down next to the last gentleman that spoke, and then on the other side, there's a 12-foot section. My house is 75 feet, my property starts 75 feet from the alley on the other side, and I, you know, I don't remember seeing any other commercial businesses that have like a walk-through with no wall. I mean, when trucks park there, literally, you can see their wheels, let alone the rest of the truck. So, I mean, I can't tell you how much it's affected my life, this commercial property being there. I mean, honestly, to the point where, you know, I've lived there for 25 years, but I don't even want to live in Royal Oak anymore because of that. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Before the appearance, could I just give a little perspective on the landscape?
We're still in the public hearing. You'll have a chance to come back up.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, we'll bring it back to this commission, and I think the petitioner wants to give some more, do you want to present?
Good evening. My name is Michael Dool, landscape architect, and I'm working with the developer, the owner. And I just want to just bring a little perspective onto what we're trying to do here. You know, it is an old shopping center, it's pretty tired, what, 25 years or so? And, you know, it is tight, that driveway is tight. The way it was built would probably be built differently now. We do have a tight corridor there, and of course, it does get banged up, no matter what type of trucks. There's nothing really can do with that space. So, our thought was, rather than, you know, beat our head against the wall and replace that wall every time it gets banged up, we would go by eliminating it and proposing landscape, which would be, we think, a much nicer solution. The wall itself is three foot tall, as it stands now, that's about the height of this right here. It's not very tall, and there is a berm in front of it. So, it doesn't make a lot of sense, it doesn't do a lot, I mean, it doesn't offer protection, it doesn't offer screening, it doesn't offer noise abatement. So, we think that landscape would be a better solution for the neighbors. And basically, what we would do is put, we have a berm that's two to three foot tall, and on top of it, we would put 10 arborvitae, they'd be the green giant variety, which grow quite large, and they're very wide. So, that's 10 evergreen, that's six foot high, on top of the two-foot berm. So, essentially, you have an eight-foot height, and that's opaque all year round. It looks a lot warmer and softer in the winter. In addition, we'd put 10 spirea, which are kind of small, just accent shrubs, just for color. And then the important thing, too, are, we have four red maple trees. These are canopy trees, two-and-a-half inch caliper, and they grow into beautiful, big shade trees, and these are red maples, they turn red in the fall. So, they're real handsome cultivars. So, that canopy will itself enhance that whole street and soften the back of those buildings. Now, the other thing is, there are some existing plant material. One thing the owner would do is, there was a couple of trees that were cut down, he would get those stumps out of there and stump out all the roots in that berm, because it's pretty old. And then, there's a big elm tree that overhangs, you can see a photograph, it overhangs into the alleyway, and that would be pruned, as well as the existing plant material would be pruned and shaped up. It hasn't been touched in probably 25 years. And, of course, the plants would be planted in good topsoil, and we think it's just kind of a win-win if we can do that. We will avoid damaging the wall, we'll have plenty of room for the trucks, and the neighbors will have, you know, a great aesthetic quality about that street, which would be much improved. So, I just want to give you a little perspective on what we're thinking.
Thank you.
Question? Ms. Douglas? So, as a landscape architect, when you build a berm and you plant trees on it...
Yeah.
Don't you, I mean, doesn't that keep the trees from absorbing water because it just runs off the berm? I mean, does that work?
No, not really. I mean, we're going to have a great topsoil in there, planting mix, and, I mean, you can see in nature trees, I mean, Ann could probably tell you, she's an environmentalist, and trees are planned, or naturally grow on hillsides and no problems. It's not going to just, some of it percolates. Sure, if you have a storm, it's going to run off, but it'll percolate in there, it'll be fine. In fact, sometimes, there's too much water in plants and they die. That's a problem we have, like in Troy for instance. So, I think it'd be fine.
Okay, thank you.
No, I was wondering if you could answer some of the questions they had asked about the maintenance, because if, it sounds like the issue's not so much the wall or the trees per se, but the trucks themselves, and the trucks parking there, and the garbage in the area for the neighbors. And so, if you can address some of those issues, because those sound to me more controversial than the tree versus the wall. I mean, how will this landscaping help fix those issues, or who's responsible for them?
The plan, the plan is, with the landscaping, is to enhance the entire, the whole area, the whole rear area there. We can, as far as garbage, I mean, the wall has been down for a few months, and that may have contributed to garbage, but we certainly have a, I did speak with Mr. Jones, and it was, I learned some things talking to him. We do have a landscape company that probably wasn't doing their job properly, and we do have a cleaning company that probably wasn't doing their job properly. So, these are things that can certainly be taken care of and improved, and we will take care of it.
And then the overnight trucks, I don't know if that sounds...
I, you know, Dollar Tree runs their shop, their store, the way they run it. I certainly hope they don't do anything against code, or, I was brought to my attention, and I feel for them, you know, if there's a lot of noise, and I said, yeah, I'd call the police, too, if there's a lot of noise in their, you know, parking there. I don't blame them, I just hope they do everything that they're supposed to do in accordance with codes and regulations.
Are you the property owner?
Yes, I'm with the property owner, and we're now managing the company.
So, do you allow overnight parking in your, in your parking lot with trucks running?
It's kind of not, it's not specifically allowed, it's not specifically disallowed.
So, then you could, you could have signs posted that says no overnight parking, that would solve the problem immediately, and that would help these neighbors out.
Maybe that would help.
I mean, if you're the property owner...
Yeah, we don't need, we don't need people parking overnight in the lot.
Well, not semi-trucks, in, you know, with the residential neighborhood right behind it. I mean, that sounds like the one problem that could be solved easily.
Sure.
Mayor?
Yeah, remind us again when Dollar Tree came into the building?
About six years ago.
Six years ago, okay. And they're a national chain, right? Across the country? So, when they looked to lease this building, did they not see the wall and the alley and the, you know, minimal amount of space to maneuver their trucks?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, you know, that's getting back to the lease, it's their lease, you know, we may modify, you know, usually we use our lease.
Right.
But they have their own lease, so I'm going to check what's in there.
But they also have their own...
But, but certainly, the site plan was part, was attached to the lease.
Right, and they have their own fleet of trucks, and they have their own business to run.
I've spoken to them dozens of times about, you got to get smaller trucks, you got to get smaller trucks. Have your bigger trucks, put it into a smaller truck, then go behind the center. This isn't, you know, we all agree, it's, it's the way it's, the way it's laid out, it's not right for their big trucks, but we do feel that the extra room we'll be giving them is the maneuverability they could use to get out. Maybe they won't have to stay overnight, they can get out easier.
Well, very briefly, I'll go through the site plan portion of this, and then you can get into it a little bit. If you, if you did want to approve a modification to the special land use approval, that would be your first action. But the second action on, would be the site plan, and part of that is the land state and screening to be installed along that north property line to the rear of the building. So, that's item one, and whether you're comfortable with it, so you can make modifications to it. What I would point out, secondly, is that there's been two trees removed already, and a third one is planned to be removed. So, technically, by ordinance, they should be putting in six, based on the ordinance that you passed, the commission passed a while ago.
Yeah.
They're proposing four, and again, you have discretion on whether you're going to require six or the four trees I'm referring to. Secondly, obviously, the action is whether you want them to require to put the wall back or modify the wall in some fashion. You could allow it to encroach further into the 25-foot setback to give more room for turning radius and have them redesign it and require it as well to be installed. Or you could approve it as it's submitted to you. So, you have options as part of your site plan review to make modifications to address the issues that come up, including requiring that they post signs that indicate no overnight parking, and it's not, it's not totally up to the petitioner's discretion, you can require it as part of your approval. So, those are the major items that we've identified in the site plan memo. The rest are pretty much standard contingencies that we put on every site plan.
Mr. Goddak?
I've been in this neighborhood back when it was originally developed. When I first moved to Royal Oak, I was just a few blocks north of this. I remember it being Damon Hardware and the Secretary of State way back when. And to me, this brings about, like, when we start looking at changing a site plan based on a tenant use. And I think that's the wrong way to go. We make decisions here based on what fits in the neighborhood, and that's what, I thought they made a good decision way back in, when this property was developed, to put a wall there with the idea that there wouldn't be any semi-trucks behind it. And if I was to approve, or get behind any kind of site plan for this property would be to eliminate the truck traffic behind the building. Let them do what Damon did, by backing up alongside the building and using a fork truck to unload. It's a bad idea to loop semis behind this building. And I'd put the wall back and put signs up, no trucks behind the building, more than double axle or something like that. I would go for landscaping if they stopped the semis behind the building. Well, that's my take on this.
Ms. Douglas?
Well, I was going to say, I'm, tell me, I'm not sure I understand what your, the gist is.
What I'm proposing?
Yeah. You'd let them, sorry.
Landscaping is good, but landscaping with the intent of making room for semis is dis... not good. So if, if they don't want masonry walls there and they want a landscape, that's fine. But I don't know if the signage could be such that it restricts vehicles over a certain GVWR to route around the back of the building. We can require signage that could be enforced. And we got neighbors here that would certainly do that. And there's opportunity for this tenant. I mean, they've got long-haul truck drivers that know how to back a semi up between the oil change business on the west side of the site and unload their trucks. It's more difficult for the driver to do, but there's, there's a strong neighborhood association that fought for a site plan that didn't want semis behind it and had it the way they had it, and I don't think we should change it for a tenant. So I'm trying to vocalize a good solution with a sign to get the semis out from the back, and I'm not quite there.
Mayor?
Thanks, Doug.
Yeah, I think Mr. Goddick brings up a very good point. We have a tenant use there now that, you know, obviously succeeds the original plan when this building was built. I see this as, maybe it's not a financial subsidy to the business, but in a way, it is a, I guess you could say frustration or, you know, putting a burden on the neighborhood subsidization of the Dollar Tree facility. When they leased this place, they knew the conditions of the property. They had the site plan. They knew the limitations. They had the ability to park on the side there, bring smaller trucks in, bring forklifts in. But that probably costs them more money, and they don't want to spend that money, and I understand that. But that doesn't mean that our neighborhoods should bear the burden of them saving a few dollars on, you know, transporting product into their stores. So I don't see a real hardship here, other than, you know, maybe poor planning on their end when they leased the building. But I think there's a remedy here Mr. Goddick mentioned. Certainly, I would support a motion on the table that would strictly restrict any overnight parking to allow our police officers to enforce that pretty readily. But again, I mean, I understand the position of the building owner. I get it. I have some empathy for that. I understand where Dollar Tree's coming from, but I don't believe that the residents of the city should subsidize a business by taking the burden of a business for that business's own profit, so without anything in return.
Anyone else?
He wants to say something.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say that, I mean, given the neighbors' concerns and given the previous tenant having been able to unload the truck in a proper way on the side of the building, like you're suggesting, Mr. Goddick, I also support that idea. And the only addition I'd make is with the two additional trees, that I'd also like that to be done, given that that's the current regulations, and like to suggest a Michigan native tree or some oaks perhaps put back in those spots.
Mr. Goddick?
Oh, I said Bradford pear. Just kidding.
Mr. Twain, can you help me with trying to, I guess this is a two-parter. You're looking for special land use, but the site plan, could you have restrictions on it to put signage so that certain trucks couldn't go around the back? I'm kind of at a loss for a good way to do this.
Well, I guess I'm asking, I would ask where your intent to go. Are you going to require the wall to go back or, and the landscaping to go in as well? Basically, if you're going to require the existing site plan, I don't need an action. I'll just send the code enforcement out and tell them to put everything back the way it was. If you're going to require a modification and approve something that's modified from it, then I guess I'd ask what that is. The petitioner is asking, as part of his approval, as part of a prior action, to say, fix this. He's asking for permission not to fix it in the sense of the wall. And so again, I guess to restate it, if, if you're going to, if you want staff to enforce the existing site plan, then I don't need an action. You can just deny this, and I'll send code enforcement out and tell them to fix the wall and put, put trees back that they've cut down and fixed the landscaping.
And that being option one, and if we're going towards the suggestion where I had, where we stop the truck traffic altogether, that wouldn't, you know, once we deny, we're not looking at the site plan at that point. So I, you know, if we put the wall back the way it is, they're still going to scrape the wall and park there overnight.
Correct.
And the whole purpose of this by the petitioner is to be able to allow these trucks to go behind it, so I can't have it both ways, you know, to allow the landscaping and say, okay, no trucks, because that's not going to satisfy the needs for the petitioner either. So I'm sorry, I'm thinking out loud there. I'll yield the floor.
You know, you bring up some really good points. I like what you said a few minutes ago about not adjusting a site plan for the tenant. I think that, that makes very good planning sense. Thank goodness for public hearings, because now we are listening to some issues that we may have an opportunity to solve through a special land use if it's, if it's appropriate for us to do that up here. So I think that if, if that's the direction we want to go in, then it would be probably prudent to, to discuss this, work this through, to make sure that we're making a good decision for the site while listening to the petitioner's specific request as well. Mr. Klooster?
Yeah. I would say that signage that prevents semi-traffic from going behind the building makes the wall a moot point, because the whole reason for not rebuilding the wall is because it keeps getting knocked down by trucks that are too big to go behind that building. And then it becomes, if we want to handle it with signage, so that we can add the caveat that there's no overnight parking. I mean, the overnight parking seems to be a result of the trucks getting stuck until it's too late, and then they wait to continue on their journey until the next day. So I think the question becomes, is it, is the site safer having a wall there separating a commercial retail use from a residential neighborhood use? And I would argue that that's the standard in this city, and that tends to be the safer condition, and that's the standard that we should uphold. So I, I tend to lead towards denying this amendment, reinforce the code, build it back the way it's supposed to be, and we don't adjust the way we design our city for tenants.
I'd like to...
Ms. Douglas and then Mr. Goddick?
Well, but, so how does that mean, if we do that, if we take no action, then we don't have the ability to require that signage saying, no big trucks here, no sleeping overnight? Although, as much as I like the idea, the enforcement of it seems impossible. I mean, it's not, A, it's not like the landlord is always there keeping an eye on them. B, there's nothing in his lease, is there? I mean, are there any conditions in the lease that would give you any enforcement ability over that?
I certainly would check it, but as I said before, this is a Dollar Tree lease.
Right.
We're kind of on their terms, so I'm not sure what's in there.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, I... I'm going to disagree. I have a little bit of knowledge of truck drivers and semi-drivers and where they're allowed to park and not allowed to park. And that is a major ticket that can be issued to a truck driver that's parking in an area that should be posted, no overnight parking, hands down.
The sleeping part I get, but what about the no big trucks restriction?
Well, I think that's going to have to be the landowner's call, but the, no overnight parking can strictly be enforced. I mean, that's, that's all over the country that that, that happens. But in terms of trying to get semis around this back end, if they keep knocking down your wall, can't you just restrict them to doing it how Damon Hardware did it? Pulling out their HiLo and offloading on the side?
Then, then we would be...
Microphone, please.
If we don't allow their deliveries, then we would be breaking their lease, and they probably could move out on us.
You're not allowing their deliveries. You're just restricting where they can deliver to.
Well, you know, we'd have to fine-tooth comb the lease, but I'm pretty sure they had some pretty big attorneys that put that together, that permits them to deliver the way they need to deliver.
Mr. Klooster and then Mr. Goddick?
So, I, I mean, as far as concerns over enforcement, I mean, I think the economics end up being the enforcement. If, I mean, I don't think there's anything in there, I would find it hard to believe that anything in their lease says they're allowed to damage the building and not pay to repair that damage. So if code enforcement is out there saying, hey, your wall's knocked down, you got to replace it, and the landowner says, hey, you guys knocked our wall down, you guys have to pay us to replace it, economics are eventually going to straighten this thing out and become the enforcement, because they're not going to want to continue to pay to fix the wall every month. They'll figure out a way to park, or it works itself out some other way.
So, Goddick, I'm in there.
I think Mr. Klooster hit the nail on the head with straightening me out on, if we try to restrict it with signage and allow landscaping, that's, that's pulling in two different directions with the same action. So I'm going to make a motion to deny special land use.
Okay, there's a motion on the table by Mr. Goddick to deny the special land use. Is there support on this?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Discussion, mayor?
Well, yeah, I think Mr. Klooster kind of was thinking what I was thinking, that eventually you knock down the wall so many times, you know, it might make sense to invest in a forklift and try a different approach. You know, maybe it's the trucking company that's responsible for it, maybe it's Dollar Tree, but eventually that will have to work itself out. It's not the ideal situation, because maybe, you know, 25 years ago, 35 years ago, when we were doing the planning for this, no one thought that a 53-foot trailer was going to make its way back there. There's nothing now that we can do to kind of retroactively make that happen unless we approve a plan that would not be approved by the petitioner. So the hands are tied there. But I, you know, I'll personally talk to our chief and understand what the overnight parking rules are in that area to see if we can, you know, maybe even work with the landlord. If a sign needs to go up out of courtesy to help our residents up there, that would be helpful, and as well as understanding what the, you know, what's prescribed in the law, and so our officers can enforce it strictly, so.
Any other discussion? Okay, not seeing there's been a motion to deny by Mr. Goddick, supported by Mr. Klooster. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the special land use has been denied, which makes it...
Denied.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks for your consideration. I understand.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight, too.
Okay, next is the, this is also a public hearing. It's a special land use and site plan, SP 181129, to renovate and combine existing two-story buildings for a restaurant on ground and upper levels with alcoholic beverage service and rooftop terrace and also professional offices on the upper level. This is at 501 to 505 South Main Street and 106 to 108 East Fifth Street. Mr. Twain?
This site is on the southeast corner of Fifth and Main Street in downtown. The site is part of the Central Business District. In the Central Business District, establishments with liquor licenses with outdoor service, whether it be on the roof or, or on the ground, are also special land uses in and of themselves. So for those two primary reasons, it's listed as a special land use for your consideration. The site or property itself currently holds several different business activities. The Vibe Credit Union is on the actual corner. The proposal that's in front of you tonight kind of wraps around that in an L shape, and that's why you see the addresses on two different streets. It also encroaches over the roof of the Vibe Credit Union with the rooftop cafe area, outdoor cafe area. The petitioner is proposing to establish a restaurant. The restaurant would occupy portions of the first floor, second floor. There would also be two tenant spaces on the second floor that are identified for office use. As previously mentioned, they're proposing outside area on the roof. They're also proposing to have a sidewalk cafe, which would require city commission approval under a sidewalk cafe license agreement. Briefly to run through the site plan memo portion, the first one is related to compliance with the plan of operation in the MMLC, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. Plan of operation has been approved by the city commission on this. I believe they did that at an October meeting. As I indicated previously, the petitioner would also have to apply for and obtain a license agreement from the commission for a sidewalk cafe where, anywhere where it encroaches into the public right of way of either Main or Fifth Streets. One of the other items that, I guess, let me find an elevation, and I'll try to point Currently, the, this is the north elevation or looking south from Fifth Street. Vibe Credit Union would be the gray portion of the building. The other elevations are, the one in the right corner is from Main. You'll see on both of those that there are windows or overhead doors being proposed. One of the items that we're suggesting is either that you require some sort of railing or base course to ensure that those are safe with people trying to come and go. You'll see that one of them's kind of elevated, and the other ones act great. Some of the other plans downtown, you've required that they put a railing across or some other item when it's not potentially being used for outside cafes. Fourth item is in regards to the refuge, just that they have direct access to the public alley to be maintained for that. The rest of them are standard contingencies regarding lighting and other items, signage, so on.
Thank you, Mr. Twain. Any questions? Ms. Douglas?
So I'm trying to picture, I puzzled over this, that outdoor terrace, is it just a narrow thing just over the, just over the northern chunk of this building? Or does it actually extend on the Vibe's roof?
It goes, if you look at the plan that's in front of you, it's all of this area.
Right.
So it extends over the Vibe Credit Union.
Okay.
The building, the building actually sits like this is the building line.
Right. And I had another question. Oh, is the, on Main Street there, is that window a garage door?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Speaker.
So the credit union is staying in place, and this is being built around? That's correct. The credit union? Okay.
Anyone else for Mr. Twain? Okay, is the petitioner's here?
My name is Mike Blannick. I'm with the firm Stuckey Vitale Architects, 27172 Woodward Avenue here in Royal Oak. And also I have the land, the property owners, the restaurant tenant, and as well, Ron Roman is our architect for the restaurant development portion of the project. So as was described by Tim, the project is to take the 1925 building and renov, completely renovate it. That includes all upgraded, all power, new elevator system... That includes all upgraded, all power, new elevator system in there, so it has 80, you know, handicap accessibility at both levels, totally interior renovations, updated electrical service. One of the comments would be to, there's a pole there that kind of cuts in between the Vibe portion and the Fifth Street portion, that's going to have to be removed. We need more power to the building, there's not enough power currently servicing it. Just so everybody understands, the Vibe is actually a tenant in this building, this is all one property. So as was described in the discussion on the terrace portion, it's only a portion of that Vibe roof is actually sloped on Main Street, it slopes back, so the terrace is only going to be about halfway portion, and then the Vibe parapet steps up. This is all sloped roof here, so we are actually proposing to screen that, so when the patrons are up there, they're not actually looking at a roof. It'll be like a green wall, you can see here in this elevation. We'll put some kind of landscaping element up there, a green wall, so that when you're up there, it'll be screened. So you're really, your view is really down Main Street, looking north is pretty much the primary view and at the corner. So it's about seating for about 49 is what we anticipate, 44 to 49 is the maximum seating capacity of that portion. And it's a seasonal element. So I know one of the comments was there's a pole here that services power, that's going to be relocated. We've already met with our engineers, and also we met with the city engineering department on the streetscape, so we have to actually, all that, Fifth Street's going to be all updated, all that's going to be torn out, that existing light pole that's there now is going to be removed, and we're going to basically mirror the other side of that street. And actually, we just got, had to get our surveyors to go all the way down to the corner, because as part of the engineering requirement, we have to survey the entire block and show the plan for the entire block being upgraded, but we're only required to go to the alleyway with our update. So we've all, we've met with them, we went through the whole plan with them, so that is in the works to do that extensive amount of upgrade to the building. We're also going to provide access on, if you look at the building now, there's two steps up to get onto the building from Fifth Street. So we're actually going to lower a portion of the building so that it's handicap accessible both on Main and on Fifth Street, creating a little lobby there. If you look at the floor plan, you'll see, we created kind of a lobby, because we got kind of a mixed-use element here with the restaurant and then an office on the second floor. So when the restaurant is closed, what this, this space will allow is that the office tenant can get into this lobby area here, and then they can go up to their suite on the second floor. This is a common corridor that we're going to provide that will allow them to access their building, you know, 24/7, basically. And then the restaurant will be closed off during its normal business hours. So that'll allow to have that mixed use going on constantly, you know, between the two tenants, or three tenants, because we don't know what the, how many tenants we're going to have in that office space. Other elements of the upgrade, I talked about the rooftops terrace, the exterior facade, what those doors, they're not going to be like a garage, they're going to actually be fold up, and they actually creates a little canopy over the seating on Main Street. We can only really put two tables there, it's very narrow little strip of the building that's on Main. If you know the Maury next door, they have quite a bit more outdoor seating, so we're only have really two tables there. What we do want to do is allow access from the restaurant to those two tables, so what we would like to do is propose maybe a railing system that we could remove, because I know there's a comment about providing a step element there between the restaurant, finished floor, and the outdoor area. Maybe we can do it with a railing system, we can remove, so when the restaurant is open, they can actually access it directly to the outside of the seating area without having to go through the entrance door. So that was one of the things we wanted to have to discuss. As far as the right-of-way, all that, you know, we're going to follow the streetscape plan, it's kind of a committed element, the engineering, so we have to do, you know, the streetlight, the tree, the pattern in the pavement, that's all kind of dictated by the city's master plan, and we intend to follow that as we update the site. So, and then as far as the exterior, we're basically going to try to maintain, we want to maintain the existing brick, you clean it up, repair it, bring it back to life, and maintain that as part of the, you know, the building facade that's currently there today. So I don't know if, I'm here to answer any questions you may have, but that's kind of the overview of the project.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Ms. Douglas.
So does the Maury have garage doors that open up and people can move freely from the sidewalk cafe into the restaurant?
Yeah, they do.
Okay.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open up a public hearing. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on this petition? Yes, sir. Your name, please.
Alan Ashley, I live at Royal Oak Manor. Just to let you know, there's timer lights not on over here, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I'm the timer.
All right. I live exactly one-half a block away from the new construction.
Wait, I'm sorry, your first and last name again, sir?
Alan Ashley, I live at Royal Oak Manor.
Okay, thank you.
We're exactly one block from this new construction. Things that worry, we're faced in the summer with 526, with its noise in the piano bar, Lockhart's noise from their music in the summertime. Now we're going to have this here. Not only is it going to cause extra noise with the rooftop, and I understand there's going to be music and dancing in here.
There will be, oh, dancing.
Okay, well, just music, it is going to filter. Then we have the problem of parking. Now, Maury's has their own parking lot and valet, that's pretty much taken care of. Now with this place here opening up and the crowds expected, now it's going to be parked near us on the Royal Oak Manor parking, which we have limited parking for our own residents. The trash that comes from Arts Beats and Eats is bad enough, now we're going to have the stuff being littered, beer bottles and carryouts and whatever from this business coming onto our property. Now, the noise and stuff is now a little too close for us. If they keep the music and the door, or inside like Maury's does during the summer, we don't even hear it. But with 526, they're right across the street, we hear it till 1 o'clock in the morning, or 2, until it's closed.
What's 526?
Yeah, it's the piano bar.
The piano bar, okay, thank you.
They have blues there, and if you're a blues fan or a jazz fan, I'm sure you've been there. They also have an upstairs tequila bar up there. They're right across the street from us, we hear them till 1:30, 2 o'clock in the morning. Our residents are seniors, we do not need a upstairs roof with guests laughing, screaming, and music up there disturbing us till 1, 2 o'clock in the morning. If they would keep the music inside, fine. If they keep their parking, I have no idea where they're going to park, because it's limited parking right now. If they park in the big parking lot across from Royal Oak Manor, that, I understand, is still available, but if Burt's and Caspens decides to build, then that parking is gone. So they are going to be parking everywhere. Plus, we have the Jewish Community Center going to be opening up soon, which means even more or less parking. This is going to be a very big congested area, and I think that, that they have to reduce some more restraining of noise from their, their building and their restaurant.
Okay, sir. It's been three minutes. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing, and let's bring it back to the commission for discussion, or any questions for the petitioner, Ms. Bickie?
I guess I would ask, just related to that, then, what activities are planned for the outside space, and what are the hours planned?
My name is Mac Boomerun, I'm the owner of the restaurant, the property. The restaurant's not going to be what he was saying, nightclub atmosphere like the Maury is. They have live music in there, I think, three, four days a week. We, when we applied for our liquor license, we signed something with the city, and we were talking with Lieutenant Moore, and we actually signed something that no DJ or entertainment would be allowed on the rooftop. So there's not going to be music or noise, and I'm not sure of Royal Oak's ordinance or not, but does the rooftop have to be closed at midnight, or can it stay open till 2:00 AM?
Well, okay, first of all, you said there's going to be no music outside?
There'll just be background music, no DJ or anything.
No live music?
Correct.
Okay. This is special land use, so in terms of hours, can we restrict the hours?
Their hours of operation are also spelled out, their plan of operation was approved by the commission.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Sir, what was your first name? Mac?
Matthew Boomerun.
Ma, Matthew.
Matthew.
Boomer.
Boomerun.
Boomer, okay. All right, Mayor.
Yeah, and I think also in your plan of operation, and we've had this discussion before, actually, with Red Fox, when they wanted to have a rooftop bar, there's actually residences right across the street, and we were hyper-concerned about the noise, and, you know, we do have the enforcement capabilities, and I'm sure, you know, you don't want to make it a live music studio up there hosting, you know, a concert every night, and that you want to work with your neighbors.
Of course.
And knowing that if there is a disturbance, I mean, this does, the noise is going to radiate north, not south, which you have a lot of things going on in the downtown, a very vibrant area, but from a plan perspective, yeah, I don't, I mean, for us, we do have some levers, like the petitioner mentioned. If the noise does get out of control, or for whatever reason, there's a, you know, acoustical unusual situation, we can say, hey, no, it's too loud. You have to go back to the drawing board and fix it, and then make sure we're not disturbing the peace. So we do, the good news is we have experience with this, we have a plan of operation that gives the police some authority to enforce, decibel levels and things like that, so I'm confident, you know, there's some measures in that regard. But I would ask, and I guess maybe it was answered, your intention up there is to have just dining service and bar service on the rooftop? There's no live music, there's no dancing, there's no, and I don't mean dancing in a bad way, but just, that usually accompanies a higher volume of music, right?
No, it'll just be background music on the rooftop, more of a lounge atmosphere than a bar nightclub atmosphere.
Similarly, we'd see like at an outdoor sidewalk cafe.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Goddick.
Tim, you'd mentioned like base courses require, I think it's item three in your recommenda, recommendations. And the petitioner talked about something like a removable device there to comply with that. Would that satisfy you?
Yeah, I mean, we were talking either a railing or something there to make sure that it was safe, both, wherever there's that broad door opening.
So leaving it as a base course would be okay, and that could be worked out with the building department and how it goes in?
I would say it could be a base or railing, but if you'd prefer a railing, then take the base idea out of it, and just call it a railing, whichever.
Thank you.
Mr. Kloster.
Or nothing. I mean, if you're happy with putting nothing there, you can do that, too. We just raised it as a...
Yeah, I think the idea of the overhead doors is to allow the indoor space to spill out into the cafe, the outdoor cafe space, which I think is a strong concept for activating the street and bringing that activity to the street, making, improving the walkability of the downtown area. And please correct me if I'm misspeaking, but I believe part of their liquor license requires some sort of restraining device, so drinks don't just walk off down the sidewalk. So whether it's a railing on the outdoor cafe, I think that kind of containment device is handled, and bringing in a railing or, you know, a base course, I think defeats the purpose of opening up that indoor, interior-exterior space that really connects the sidewalk to the activated restaurant space.
Part of the issue is that the sidewalk cafe comes down part of the year, too, so.
So what does the Maury do?
I don't know off the top of my head.
I mean, they've got the exact same circumstance.
Right.
With garage doors that open all the way up, and people can...
So does Blaze Pizza, I believe.
Right.
Without checking, I don't know. I even believe the hot dog place on Fifth Street has a door.
Maybe they don't open them when the railing's not up, sidewalk railing.
I would tend to think the, yeah, the, when it's nice out and you want the overhead doors open, the railings are going to be up, because you'd want to activate that street and have those tables occupied.
Any more questions for the petitioner? Ms. Douglas?
No, I was going to introduce a motion. We need to approve a special land use and site plan, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking for the special land use text.
SP 181129.
So it's just, I mean, we just approved the special land use, there aren't any conditions to it?
No, they meet all code requirements.
Okay. I move approval of the special land use.
Okay, there's been a motion by Ms. Douglas, support by Mr. Goddick. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Special land use is approved. Now on to the site plan.
Item one, again, was just compliance with the plan of operation, we've talked about. Item two is related to any sidewalk cafe. Item three is really the item that has to do with the overhead door, and whether you want something there to secure it, or you want staff to work with them on what that might be. But that's really an outstanding item we're looking for direction on.
Ms. Douglas.
Yeah, I will make a motion to approve the site plan omitting item three, and leaving those matters to staff, but, I mean, with a goal, as Mr. Kloster so correctly put it, of maintaining that access to the street and that vitality.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Goddick. Is there discussion on this motion? Not seeing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved.
Thank you for bringing your business to Royal Oak.
We're excited.
Yeah, looks like a great plan.
I hear it's a terrible place for restaurants, I can't imagine what they're thinking.
I hope your food's good.
We're excited.
Watch out, there's a lot of new restaurants opening up. No, that's good. Build into the excitement.
Hopefully, we can have you all as guests.
I don't know about that. Okay.
Can we accept guests from petitioners?
Moving on to other business, this is a sign variance. SV 181114, request to install or replace the 92-wall, 92-wall freestanding directional signs for hospital. Beaumont Hospital at 3601 West 13 Mile Road, with variances for maximum permitted sign area height and number of signs. Mr. Twain, I'll need your help on this one.
Well, and it was very fun putting it together, let me tell you. Just real, I guess, to try and walk you through the staff report on it. As you indicated, there are roughly 92 different signs being proposed here. We broke it down into the first chart, you'll see there are 25 wall-mounted signs on various buildings. That chart in the first part indicates the location or address. The second obviously indicates the name of the building or it's being placed on. The third column is the sign number that relates to the overall map that's in your packet. The third column is a sign type, just tells you how it's been classified by building, either as a wall sign or a directional sign.
What does directional sign mean?
Directional. The height of the sign is the third width, and then, and that relates, the height is just the measurement height, it's not how tall it is from the ground, it's...
It's the sign itself.
It's a wall sign, it's a sign itself, is a foot, .17. Then the width is indicated there, and then the overall total sign area. The second to last column indicates what's allowed, maximum square footage that's allowed. And the final column indicates what variance is potentially needed for each sign, and you'll see some don't need a variance. The wall, the signs are in sign area, too, and that's what it's based on. And then the next chart that we've provided is related to 67 ground-mounted signs. Again, those are broken into directional signs and/or freestanding signs, depending on what the building department classified them as. And it's, and the, in this column, it's set up similar, you'll see the sign numbers, there are several, rather than just one in this case, because they relate to several different signs. And then it's broken into height, and in this case, that's the actual height of the sign is from ground to the top of the sign. And then the next one indicates what's the maximum permitted for each type, and so there is a variance being requested on several of those, as you'll see listed in variance under height. And then the next, next one is set up for sign area in terms, again, how tall, or how much, how much square footage is there, what's allowed, and what they're potentially exceeding it by. The last column where it says quantity variance required relates to four signs where the building department has determined that the, there's a provision in the sign ordinance that you can have one sign for frontage. If you have over 300 feet of frontage, you can potentially get a second one. In this case, those, you're getting two signs and a... If you have over three hundred feet of frontage, you can potentially get a second one. In this case, those, you're getting two signs in a, in a one frontage area or, or where one's allowed. So that, so there are potentially, um, three variances required for some signs in this location, uh, if you go across that chart. The last, I think, item I'll point out is the, uh, one sign that's in the Coolidge right-of-way will also require a license agreement approved by the city commission, uh, for, uh, continued placement in the public right-of-way. That's how this is set up. Um, real briefly to go through some of it, I know the petitioner probably walked through it better than I can, but I think what I want to point out is on the attachments, you'll see the sign number up in the corners have been provided. Then you'll see an indication of what's existing and whether it's to remain. And in several of these cases, they're adding a, a, a number or a letter indication, and that's all that's being added. Uh, but it does, uh, kick it over the, uh, square footage requirement and the variance. And then there are some signs that are being either installed or totally replaced, so. And that, and the first series you'll see, those are all the wall signs. And then the, uh, second part is related to the, uh, freestanding, uh, signs. So I, I'm not planning on walking through everyone unless you want to talk about one.
Don't. Any questions for Mr. Twing? So I, I have a couple of questions. Um, for example, you've got Rose Cancer Center. The sign's already there. It looks to me like they're adding the pink eight.
That's correct.
So as a wayfinding opportunity, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then going down to, um, for example, there's a sign that says drop-off. It looks to me like they're just putting in a different drop-off sign that's colorized and improving visibility and wayfinding.
And it may, and it probably exceeds some square footage number.
Okay, okay. I got you.
Yeah, it's replacing what's there, so.
Okay. Thank you. Um, any other questions for Mr. Twing? Okay, um, petitioner? I think we're pretty good here, but I mean, if you want to go through the all hundred and thirty-seven.
Oh, yeah.
I won't push you through that, I promise. Uh, again, my name is Ed Phillips, uh, Phillips Sign and Lighting. Uh, I have a handout I'd like to hand out if I could, real quick.
Please.
I'm here this evening with Jan McLoane, uh, from Royal Oak, uh, the main, at the Royal Oak Hospital located at three-six-zero-one Thirteen Mile Road. Our hardship is lack of, or size, shape, and configuration of our property and the need to direct traffic in many, to the many services that we offer. With over one hundred acres, multiple entrances off Thirteen Mile, Coolidge Highway, Judson Avenue, John B. Pool Drive, Hillside Drive, Administration Drive, South Hospital Drive, North Deck Drive, and a variety of unnamed roads, it becomes crystal clear that we have the potential for a navigation challenge. Our experience has shown the most effective way to get patients and visitors to their destination is good legible, clear identification, and directional signage. Good directional signage demands an attractive color and number. And I might add, the number is what's really kicking these things over a little bit. There's, most of the signs that are on the property are roughly the size of what we're suggesting or proposing here today. The fact that all of our sites had to get a little bit wider because of the numbering system. So we're, we're hoping, not hoping, we've done this at other facilities, other campuses, where we'll actually number co- color code the sign, color code the parking areas, and color code the entrances. It really does clear up congestion and simplifies parking. It makes this, it's easier for the staff of the hospital to give the visitors and patients arriving, patients directions on where to go. So that's driving a little bit of the increase. On the first page of the handout, we have addressed all eight of the findings of fact. I think you'll see them there. Page two demonstrates the neat cohesive appearance of the new Beaumont branding campaign. Yet the Beaumont blue is a six-six-one PMS blue. It's a beautiful blue and it's, uh, aesthetically gorgeous. I mean, you put the ground signs and we put the wall signs and all this starts tying together. It really comes together nice as a package. Page three is a demonstration of a night view. When you look at these signs, consider that they don't entirely light up. At night, you see the copy, you see the arrow, and you'll see the colored icon. That's all. So that image there, it shows you more of the sign than you really will see at night. At night, you won't see, you will not see the sign at all. Just the copy. Uh, and the, uh, page four, which I really didn't mention on here, is the license or the agreement that we have on the sign, uh, that was mentioned the last day that Mr. Twink mentioned, that muted estate. Uh, also, please note, uh, the emergency panels on all these signs, contrary to what I just told you about the backgrounds, uh, they do light, they light red. And the reason for that is obviously directions need to be crystal clear to people in, you know, panic and, uh, emergency-type situations. The plan to see before you tonight has been vetted by numerous staff at the hospital, including the hospital president. It has been driven, rehearsed to be sure down to the last day to detail that we have identified all hospital entrances most appropriate for a patient or visitor's needs. The, the hospital, I'm sure you all know, is huge. The last thing we want are people to come, like older people in particular, and park in, in an entrance that really doesn't work for them. We need to get them to the correct address or a correct, instead of walking them through the entire facility. The process is already completed. We can assure you that the patient, visitor experience as well as the final appearance of the site will be greatly enhanced. And I can answer any questions about any, any particular sign you might have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Godeck? Um, sign number one-ten. Uh, there was a drawing of it that shows it, uh, a person standing next to it. And it looked like it was, the height of it was well above the person's head. Yet in the description, it shows that it falls within the height requirement. Can you clear me up on one-ten? And while you're looking for that, I, I, if I could make some general comments, um, I, I agree with the petitioner wholeheartedly about directional, and it looks like a lot of these signs are just cleaning things up and getting things more readable. But a number of them are freestanding and wall signs that really, I guess I just look at some of the ones that are grossly, I'll, I'll use a different word, that are, um, much larger than what the, um, um, zoning allows. So if there's a, a large difference, like, uh, what, um, our chair brought up, uh, on the rose, um, sign, that one is like, um, not quite double what is allowed. And that's not really a wayfaring kind of variance. All these directional ones were wayfaring to get around the campus. Um, good plan. But I guess if I did have any
Well, one, one-ten is allowed to be sixteen feet high.
It is?
Yes, it's a freestanding sign.
Okay, and that doesn't require variance? Okay, thank you. But I, I, there's so many here that are great. Um, you know, there might be a half dozen or so that have large variances that are not directional that I don't know if we can pick out and discuss or just, um, go along with the flow.
It would be my opinion, and it's just an opinion, that all signs are directional, even the ones that you're mentioning. They, they're all directing in some sense.
That's your, that's your opinion.
Driving, okay, that's fair.
Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I just, will add, too, we have to keep in mind also that this is also a unique situation where it's a captive campus. And I've unfortunately spent a lot of time, uh, at Beaumont, specifically in the last, uh, couple of weeks. And I do think that even though signs may appear to be large, as you're coming in and trying to figure out where to turn, it is a large campus in size. In some cases, does give visibility because the distances are, you know, farther away when you have to make a decision to turn right or left. So that is, you know, one thing to consider, uh, for this body.
Ms. Beiki?
I want to ask a related question. Is the sign ordinance for the, for the city overall, so I would agree with what you're saying, for a special campus like a hospital, I would tend to think that some of the bigger signs might be more appropriate than if they were on the side of a road or something like that. Um, so I could understand the need for having a larger one.
Mr. Kloster.
Yeah, so I, I tend to agree that wayfinding is the paramount importance of signage, especially on a hospital campus, and Beaumont benefits from their campus being pretty well removed from the public right-of-way. It's setback and it's kind of almost its, its own defined small little city within, uh, our city. The, the only signs that I really see, see any concern with are the ones that are fronting on the right-aways, and that's going to be your one-thirty-three, one-thirty-four, one-thirty-six, and one-thirty-seven, where you're, you're asking for a two-foot plus or minus height variance. And it seems to me that a majority of that two-foot is occupied by branding, not necessarily wayfinding. Um, so that, with the exception of those four signs, um, I have no issue with, with any of these. I think they're, they're meant for wayfinding. They're meant for easing flow of traffic and getting people where they need to go in a timely manner when they're, in their most panicked and difficult state. And if we can just bring those down under the heights, I think we've been pretty consistent. They were trying to, above all else, maintain kind of the height canopy of signs when we get these variances in front of us. And wayfinding becomes kind of the one caveat to upholding the order of the law on the sign, uh, ordinances. And I would, I would say that if we can get those under, or within that sixteen-foot threshold, that would be my only comment on the, the signage package.
So, um, I, I think the wayfinding is outstanding. I mean, the, the two places that have the most stressful campuses are airports and hospitals. And bad signage at either is not good for anybody. So I, I mean, I'm, I'm in support of this. I, I'm not so concerned about I may appreciate what Mr. Kloster's saying, but I'm not so sure that I'm, I'm having objections to any of these. That's just one planning commissioner's opinion. Anyone else? Mr. Godeck?
Uh, I, 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 I'm just, the sheer quantity in, in what's going on, I, um, my original comments about, um, wayfinding, um, don't take them the wrong way, um, the, the sheer size in, in all the details to this, um, facility, uh, requires this, uh, sheer volume and, and clear signage. Um, I, I do agree with Mr. Kloster's comments, though. If, if we could bring down those, um, those road signs monuments from eighteen and a half feet to, to sixteen, I think that would be consistent and, and look better. That, that's the only thing I would comment on. I think it would be a, an aesthetic improvement, but, um, I would probably support.
Mr. Twing, did you, I thought, did you have a comment?
No, I just wanted, I'll comment on, uh, the license agreement in a minute, but
Okay, okay. Yes, sir.
Okay, we are concerned about the visibility at Coolidge and Judson in particular. That's one of the, one of the driving, uh, the, the driving height of these signs. If we were to, in fact, drop these down per Mr. Kloster's, uh, recommendation, the copy would all change in size, and we think that these are, it's imperative that the copy is maintained at a certain size. So if you take two feet out of the overall dimension on these signs, there's very little base on them, you'll notice. There's really nowhere to go aside from reduce the size of copy. And these are probably four of, and I know they are four of our largest signs. I, I am aware of that. But these are probably the most important, some of the most important, as they're bringing people onto our property.
Thank you. Any other questions for the petitioner, Ms. Beiki?
I was just going to ask, couldn't the height difference, if I'm understanding, the, 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 the dimensions, right, just come out of the height of the post rather than the sign itself? Because it's the overall height.
The dimension is, it's the overall height.
Yeah. Yeah, on sign, uh, one-thirty-seven, you could take it out of the post.
Oh, I see. Were you looking at a different one? Uh, maybe, I'm looking at one-thirty-seven, so maybe I'm, maybe it's a different one that's, he's referring to.
They're talking about those that are right there, one-thirty-three, one-thirty-four, one-thirty-six.
One-thirty-five.
Thank you. I thought they were all the same dimensions, I mean, on post.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I would argue that that bottom panel has substantially smaller copy with significant open area around it, and the portion of the signage that is up above the sixteen-foot allowable height is branding, not wayfinding. Um, so I, I, I hear what you're saying. I don't want you to change any of the copy for the wayfinding. I think the height of the copy for the wayfinding is important. Um, but getting a height variance for, to get your branding up sixteen to eighteen feet up in the air when there's substantial area of empty blue space in some of these bottom panels to, to make that happen, I, I, I don't want you to bury this down in the ground so that you don't have the visibility that you need, but I, I don't, I don't see your hardship on that one.
Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I understand that point. I also see that, you know, airports and hospitals are very stressful and seeing Beaumont as almost being synonymous with hospital. You don't say, I'm going to the hospital, I'm going to Beaumont. You know, where are you at? Oh, I'm at Beaumont. Oh, they took my neighbor to Beaumont. Um, so, uh, it's kind of a brand, but it's also, you know, an indication that this is where the hospital is. These are the services for Beaumont, not for a different type of physician or somebody from another institution. Um, in a way, I see it, I understand Mr. Kloster's point, but I also see it blended because of the name and what people view of Beaumont being here in, um, as a hospital. And Beaumont is synonymous with hospital here in this area.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
At the risk of belaboring this, one of the things we strive for so hard on a sign layout is airspace. And I do agree with you, Mr. Kloster, that there would certainly is room if we were to tighten that bottom up. I think then we're going to, we'd, we'd look so much like the rest of the signs. I don't particularly care for, personal opinion again here, the two panels above the, in one-thirty-three and one-thirty-six, the copy, there's so much patient and family entrance. The one under at Beaumont Children's Hospital, those just look cluttery and tight to me. And if you drive around the site today, that's what's happened. Over the years, those signs have all just sort of migrated into this, this vast array of all the different services and it should, they're just, they're almost difficult to read. There's so much copy on them. So one of our challenges on this Beaumont site has been to allow airspace and clean, super legible. And that's what we think we achieve with this. And we certainly can lower it to your sixteen feet, but I do think we're going to suffer in terms of the legibility and cleanliness of it.
Is there a motion?
I, Bill's just going to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll, I will make a motion to approve the sign variances as listed, with the exception of sign one-thirty-seven, the post-mounted sign, that that height be brought down to with, under the sixteen-foot maximum permitted height.
I do agree with that one.
Second. There's been a motion by Mr. Kloster and seconded by Ms. Douglas to approve all sign variances with the exception of one-thirty-seven stating that should be brought down to its
The height has to fit within the ordinance requirements.
Sixteen feet.
Correct.
Okay.
Just one-thirty-seven?
Just one-thirty-seven.
Okay.
Okay, uh, can I stop you there?
Excuse me, there's a motion on the table. Is there any discussion in this motion? Mayor and then Ms. Douglas.
Yeah, we're just talking about the main entrance sign that's on the posts. It says Beaumont.
That one right there.
Yeah, right there. Bring it down two feet.
If you could notice the last page, I know I'm not supposed to speak, but this is, this is granted by
State of Michigan.
State of Michigan. This sign cannot be touched.
Well, then, if it can't be touched, then you can't, you can't do these improvements to it.
We aren't doing any improvements. That, that's what it looks like today. We're just included in the package because it's on the property. And I'm sorry to be speaking out of turn here, but I see this
And I, and it's not in MDOT's right-of-way, so MDOT doesn't have authority over it. MDOT, MDOT is treating it as a billboard, and they have a billboard requirement that you'd have permits for, so they don't have, uh, they have jurisdiction over issuing what they would call billboards adjacent to a, a state highway. But the, the sign itself doesn't appear to be in there right-of-way. But the sign itself doesn't appear to be in there right of way.
Okay, can we leave that open?
And it's a, it's a license agreement issue on it, but it's also part of your sign package because the building department looks at all signs on site in terms of compliance when you ask for all of them, so while you're not changing it, technically it's part of the package.
That's why we include it.
Right.
Okay, great. So could we just, have this approval based on...
They're going to approve it based on lowering it, and we can talk about it later, but...
It's fine.
Ms. Douglas, you...
Oh, I was just going to say, I hadn't spoken earlier, just support, you know, the discussion about wayfinding, the size of the campus, and the fact that so, so very little of this actually even is in the eyes of anybody driving by. I mean, the only people who are really going to use it are the people who are already on your campus, so, I mean, all of this makes perfect sense, but before you go, and just because I, I have Beaumont people here in front of me, the intersection on your campus, because I have, the past couple of years have spent a lot of time, more than you, on your campus, and there's a, an intersection on the north side of the campus where traffic comes in off 13 Mile by the South Park, is it the South Park? No, the North Parking Deck, just cries out for a traffic circle. I just have to say that.
Wouldn't it be lovely if they had the space?
Or something, anyway, just, that's all, that's my comment.
There's several of those intersections that...
Okay, there's a motion on the table with support for approval with a variance, for allowing all variances with the exception of number 137. Is there any more discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All 91 wall variances have been approved.
Thank you very much for that. Thanks for the conversation.
Seems like a tremendous amount of work.
Ninety-two, okay.
Ninety-two signs.
Ninety-two signs.
Just that we're all good on this, it's just awesome. You're a great time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
It's the great work that Beaumont does.
Okay, let's see. Next is a sign variance 18, 11, 15. It's a request to replace wall signs and menu boards for a restaurant with drive-through service, McDonald's at 423 West 11 Mile Road. Mr. Twing.
Um, yeah, this site is just a little bit west of Lafayette Avenue in the Central Business District. They're proposing to replace two wall signs on the north facade and three wall signs on the west, one of which would extend, I believe, some four feet out from the building wall, and, and only 12 inches are permitted. That one is shown on a canopy, and it's, not that we read signs, but it says, it's a welcome sign, you'll see it in the packet, so that one is indicated in here.
This is what I...
The other ones are related to the number of signs, as you'll see, they are proposing more than a single sign on a facade. The other, the other sign variances are related to the proposed menu boards, with two menu boards versus a single menu board or free-standing sign, and then they're also proposing that they be electronic message centers, which are not allowed in sign area three, so that's the other variance that's identified in the list. And I believe the last one is related to the electronic message center sign and a requirement for its aspect ratio to be no greater than 16 to nine, and I'm not sure what the building department determined it to be, but it exceeds it according to their letter.
Thanks, Mr. Twing. Any questions? Ms. Douglas.
So, Mr. Twing, the projecting sign, if it didn't have any words on it, would it be allowed as a canopy?
The canopy is allowed. The fact it's got a sign above it or mounted to it is what's...
Makes it a projecting sign?
Correct.
Got it, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Twing? Dishner?
Good evening, Landon White with Site Enhancement Services. Do you mind if I pass out additional...
Sure, yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's a little more conversational than what I'm going through, so just to put you at ease. He representing the McDonald's at 423 West 11 Mile Road, and McDonald's is obviously in a remodel phase nation-wide, and they've identified as, this is one of their locations that they wanted to invest their money in and provide a facelift from the traditional McDonald's, and they wanted to add positively to the surrounding area. This, McDonald's is obviously within a very highly-traveled mixed-use corridor, and what's being requested is, is we don't, we don't believe to be egregious in nature considering the surrounding corridor and what's, what's there. So, and I'll move quickly and allow for, this to be deliberation, but page three gives you the entire sign proposal, the blue signs are what is code compliant, what is, and actually what has currently been installed, and the red is what's being requested, we're requesting really from. Page four, if you, if you follow track with me, shows the, the McDonald's sign, the red McDonald's channel letters and the M logo, to total a 46.83 square feet, while yes, code limits one sign per facade, but it allows for 10% of the elevation, or 10% of the elevation or 100 square feet, whichever is less, and, and as you can see, the two elevations that will require wall sign relief, we're asking them to be considered to fall within the content, or the, excuse me, the intent of the code to not exceed the 100 square feet or the 10%, as you see, the, the two wall signs on the north elevation only total a 4.57% of the elevation, and then on the west elevation is 1.97%, including all three wall signs. The play place on the west elevation, because the play place is not something that is, that is, a service offered at every McDonald's that we, we see is something necessary for this elevation to, to offer the service and show the service, and then the welcome sign, code allows for four square feet of a blade sign, and we ask this to be considered a technicality because it is not attached directly to the building and projecting out, but it's, it's simply attached to the awning, so we just ask that it be considered in that manner. The wall signs meet the intent of the code not to exceed the square footage allowed, and, and minimal, and they're minimal in impact in size, and these signs, these signs won't negatively impact the community, and I assume, and I'll go ahead and assume and maybe my words later, that the, the majority of the concern would be these reader boards, oh, it's the two menu boards are being requested, and the site plan on page three can refer to you where those would be located, and one of them being the pre-sale board, and they're, they're not allowed, obviously, because they're classified as electronic message centers, and we're requesting these be granted based on that they have the capability to be electronic message centers, but in practice, the way they, they're used, they're, they're not a scrolling ticker of, they don't have McDonald's news at the bottom rolling along, they're, they're going to be utilized in a static manner that will only be switched from breakfast to, to the rest of the menu, so one time a day, and then, these are digital screens under tempered glass, and so the screens are designed to limit the residual illumination and glow that other menu boards may have at their sites, basically, it's just, in a way, it's not a TV screen, but it's a digital screen just like that, and so that reduces that glow that kind of, I guess the best term would be residual illumination. And so, the digital screen does allow for the site to be up to date based with their, with their ingredients, if they're running out of something, it allows just instant without any back and forth, and then the pre-menu board offers an additional cue to customers to mitigate any backup through the parking lot, kind of gives, gives them a, hey, I need to make sure that I'm ready to order, because we've all been on our phones sitting in the drive-thru before, and then we kind of get a, oh yeah, I need to make sure I know what I want, so. Photos on page six to nine in your package do show, while there's some of the vegetation has been removed from these photos, these photos do show the limited visibility of these pre-menu, or these menu boards, and while the boards will only be momentarily visible from the west side of the building, from West Street. So overall, what we're requesting, we believe, to not be egregious considering the corridor and to have limited or no negative impact to the surrounding community, and I appreciate your consideration of this request, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Ms. Douglas and then Mr. Goddick?
On your roof, are you really putting a, an M on the roof, or is that just a, a something in your graphics?
Oh, no, no, just on the graphics, I apologize, I was sure what's...
Although that would be really cool.
Actually, no, I think, I thought it was like super smart, given, you know, satellite technology. I mean, it's, it would be a great marketing move. I say do it.
Well, I mean, some roof signs are a hot button in some municipalities, but...
Anyway, that's, that's all.
Mr. Goddick?
Any change to the pole-mounted sign out front?
No.
Are you, you have a digital message center on that right now?
I don't believe it to be digital.
The old-style electronic reader board?
Yeah.
Static, it's static.
Yeah, it's a static, it's a, it's a manual reader, not the...
It's not the high-tech stuff.
No, no, it's not the digital...
It hasn't been static in months. Do you, are you familiar with the ordinance on how fast that can change?
The 30 seconds you're talking about?
Yeah.
The 13 or 30?
Obviously, you're not familiar with it, and you, you can drive by it on your way home, and it's not static. You guys haven't been in compliance with that board for a long time. It, it changes often, you, you have like graphics where like the sun is coming up and it's moving along it.
Oh, they took that off.
And what time did that happen?
When they cut the cable, when they redid the roof and the sign went down.
Last week?
Like, yeah, there's no moon or any of that.
Can you, can you bring that particular sign into compliance with making it static and not change so often?
Every 30 seconds. I can now, yes. Now that we can reprogram it over again.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Is there a motion? Mr. Goddick?
Everybody knows how I, I am about electronic signs and that, that you're not really chaining that. We've been consistent with fast food chains about the size of the pole-mounted signs and the monument signs out front, but we've cut leeway around the ones that are used for menu boards and stuff like that, so I, I particularly don't have a lot of grief around what's going on here, but I'd like to hear from comments from the rest of the stable.
I, I guess I'm just wondering, I'm kind of new here, I, I mean, I am new. Again, McDonald's in many places has signage that's very restricted when it's in central cities, when it's in, and so I'm just wondering what, why you would have to make it bigger than the, than the ordinance, given how recognizable the institution is as it is. If that's what the request is, to make it larger, I don't see the point of it.
And I, as a...
If I'm not misunderstanding the request.
So, and Mr. Twing could answer this, or I could. So, we don't allow multiple signs, we only allow one sign on a facade, limited to a certain size. What they're proposing is two signs which add up to less than we would allow in one sign.
Oh, oh. The M alone, in my opinion, would tell people that it's McDonald's, especially with the other M, and so, anyway, I didn't realize that the, the two of them together is less than. Thank you for the clarification.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the variances they've requested here.
Motion by Ms. Douglas, is there support?
Support.
Support by the mayor. Any discussion on this motion to approve all of the variances?
The, the one?
The one thing I struggle with is the quantity of the electric menu board signs, like a pre-men, I don't know why we need to have a pre-menu menu, and so, in order to get kind of, the areas I don't, I think are egregious, you know, having the, the M is minimalistic and doesn't, doesn't bother me. I agree that you don't, the golden arches are pretty iconic, and if you're pulling into McDonald's and don't, you see the golden arches and know, you probably don't need any signage, you have typical prototype stores and everyone knows what it is. But again, the areas aren't egregious, it doesn't bother me significantly, the heights are within the requirements, really, it's the quantity of the menu boards that bother me, and even that, it's in the back of the site, and I, I don't want to put up a stink or, or that, so I just want to talk again, I guess.
Mr. Goddick?
When they do a, a sign makeover on, on a facility like this, are all the signs looked at as far as being in compliance, the one I'm talking about is the one, the post-mounted sign out front?
I'm assuming they look at all of them?
Okay.
But I don't know, because I'm not doing the review.
Because that's the only one that I would have objection to is, I, I think that's too high, and we, when we did Arby's, they looked at all of them, and if, if one of the signs weren't in compliance, they had to bring that, that debt down to earth. So not knowing that, I'm not going to support this motion.
Ms. Douglas?
No, he makes a good point, because, I mean, remember the property on Campbell, like at Gardenia, where they had two signs on the property and they were only allowed one? The building department did point out the existence of that, you know, non-compliance, so I'm inclined to think that the building department would have looked at all the signage on this site, if not part of the, for their sign variance, as part of their construction project.
Their, their letter doesn't address or identify the other free-standing signs on site.
Okay. Well, and knowing, knowing our building director, if he could, he would.
So that's not a requirement when we redo this number of signs, is to check them? I, I think in the Arby situation, if I recall correctly, they were also redoing the Arby sign out front, and part of their whole, like, switching the logo around, so that one was going to be altered, so therefore it was part of their own package. That still isn't answering my question, I guess, though, is if...
No, they, generally, they would be looking at all non-conforming signs on site, and I believe the way the ordinance is set up is that you can't keep a non-conforming sign and get other signs. I don't see it particularly listed in their letter that's included in your packet as a, as a problem, I don't, but...
Would you know offhand what the height in this...
But the, well, free-standing signs are not allowed in sign area three at all. You've got to remember, this is part of the Central Business District in the way it's zoned, and sign area three doesn't allow...
Free-standing.
...free-standing signs at all, and you'll see, you'll see that in the original write-up as one of the conditions, so there is no height three item in the sense of, of a free-standing sign, it's, they're just not allowed.
That sign's non-conforming.
Its presence.
So just with that, you know, not having that sign taken into account, I, I think it should be.
Ms. Douglas?
Well, but if, if indeed, you know, this, I mean, that, the building department could address that separately from what we're talking about here today. I mean, if there's, if there's something wrong with it and they missed it when they prepared their letter, they'll know about it shortly.
Right.
Mr. Goddick?
I don't, if we pass the variances without taking that into consideration, I don't think the building department would have any ammunition to do anything about causing that as a caveat to do anything with that sign, so...
Well, you can postpone it a month and we'll go back and ask them if...
There's a motion by Ms. Douglas, supported by the mayor, on the table.
Can I ask a question?
Ms. Beeky?
Because this business is in the Central Business District, and because our master plan and our intention is to kind of reduce, again, drive-throughs, and I don't want to change it as a business model, but again, I'm thinking about just the aesthetic of it being close to the Central Business District, even though it's over by the bus station and stuff, I don't, are, is some of the signage not appropriate because of that ordinance, or this is the whole point of the variance?
Well, it's part of, part of the reason for the variance is because it...
Well, it's part of, part of the reason for the variances, because it was included in sign area three. Drive-throughs are not allowed in the Central Business District, but you have two or three of them that have been approved over the years. Sonic Burger, the bank drive-through that's right next to it, I'm not sure the history of this one, it may have been there prior to that provision of the ordinance, but, so I mean, there are a lot of things that potentially a drive-through restaurant wouldn't be allowed in the CBD.
I see, but there was already variance, it's, it's, it's mere existence as a variance. Okay, that, that, thank you.
I mean, you can, if you want clarification on the, from the building department, you can postpone it and I'll ask them, but the notice we provided was based on their letter, so I'm not sure what else to do with it.
I guess that's what I would request of this body, but...
Make her the motion.
We have a motion on the table that has to get voted on first.
A motion to postpone.
I'd like to move that...
She doesn't have to formally withdraw her motion? Okay, thank you.
I'd like to move that we table this for one month.
Not table. Postpone, postpone.
I'm sorry, postpone, thank you.
So there's a motion by Mr. Goddick to postpone this for one month. Is there support on that?
I'll support that.
Ms. Douglas supports. Any discussion on that?
We have opportunity to speak now.
No.
I'll just, I mean, put an observation out there. While I understand the question at hand and motive to postpone, we also had a professional staff review everything, put it forward. We have a petitioner that took upon the advice of our staff that these are the items that will be evaluated, this is the plan that they're moving forward, these are the variances that they were prepared to ask for. And so it puts everybody in a little bit more of a challenged position. If there's something we need to do to make sure that our, you know, there was something missed at the staff level, then, then we can look at that. I don't see it as a egregious thing, you know, such a huge miss that, you know, we need to postpone, and given the fact that, in good faith, all parties here were, you know, going through the appropriate review process. I mean, putting it behind a month, basically saying, staff missed something, and we'll delay this project a month, and maybe they did, but maybe they didn't, and then we just postpone everybody's construction for a month. I mean, at some point, you have to put faith in those who are...
It does look taller, I mean, it is a sign that's not allowed.
Right.
Whether it's too tall or not, I don't know, it's, but it is a freestanding sign. The way the ordinance is written, you can't keep a non-conforming sign without getting a variance on it, unless they've...
Unless there's some other reason that was there, yeah.
But if it's not allowed, but they're not asking for any changes to that sign, then...
Yeah, the way it's set up, though, is you can't get all these other new signs without addressing the other non-conforming.
Existing non-conforming sign, right, okay. So now there's a motion by Mr. Goddick and a support by Ms. Douglas to postpone for one month. Mr. Goddick?
The reason I'm asking for, for that, too, is we've been consistent about cleaning up signage as it affects the Central Business District, and we've pulled down signs that are smaller than this to, to, to make it look better. And there's a considerable investment going on at, at this facility, and they're cleaning things up, and it's looking better. And if this wasn't considered in, in bringing the information forward, I, I think postponing it this one month is a good idea.
Ms. Douglas? Mr. Klooster?
I guess my question is, just because it isn't listed as a reason for being denied in the letter, if we know it's a non-conforming sign and it would be part of the sign variance as a sign variance package, is there any reason we can't address this particular sign? Just because the staff didn't address it as a reason for denial?
It's not part of the notice, it's not part of the items included.
Could there have been a variance on that sign previously that's separate from this whole situation?
No, please, there's a motion on the table. Ms. Douglas?
The mayor makes a very good point, and I'm prepared to vote against the very motion that I just seconded.
Okay, any other discussion? So I, I like the motion by Mr. Goddick. I think it's incumbent upon the planning commission, this is why we're here, to, to see these things, and I don't think we're saying one way or the other that a staff person may have missed or may not have missed something. There's something that we're seeing on the site that causes us concern or question, and postponing for one month, so we can get this right, I think is, is an obligation of the commission, that, that's my opinion. So, anything else? So there's a motion on the table to postpone for one month by Goddick, supported by Ms. Douglas. If there's no further discussion, all those, all those in favor of postponing for one, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. Three and three.
So three to three, so the motion fails.
Should we go back to the original motion on the table?
Can, can he answer a question, or not at all during this phase?
Mr. Twing, we still have a motion on the table. Is there...
Well, you can ask, ask him a question. I don't see why not.
Does anyone here have a question?
No, I mean, the petitioner, if you want to ask him.
I was wondering what the variance, if there was a variance on the sign previously, or is it not?
Please.
My name is Tony Kosteki. I'm one of the owners, and my son Andrew is also an owner. We do have a variance on that sign. And the reason for the variance was that we're not really downtown Royal Oak, we're actually on Lafayette. And the purpose of that sign was, any eastbound traffic that was coming down 11 Mile would not know we're there. So we requested the variance above the viaduct, and the city approved it, and that's why the sign is there. So I'm happy, we've been happy with the city of Royal Oak, and we have our variances, but now we're trying to repair the menu board that we took down, and that's why we're here.
Okay.
It's just the, it's just old menu boards, it's an old pre-sale board and an old menu board that's out of date. This is the new state-of-the-art LED in an attempt to reduce the amount of plastic McDonald's is using. We're going to all digital versus plastic trans lights and all that. So right now, we're 75% business's drive-through. We have no drive-through signage, other than a piece of particle board with stuff stapled to it, and it's really kind of hurting our business. We already waited like a month, because we did have to do the concrete footings to get things ready and remove the old sign. So the drive-through sign's really what, what we're kind of here for, is to get our business back right now, because we're, this is a tough time of year already. It's going to get tight when the weather gets bad, and staffing's a bad, and all that, so...
Mr. Goddick, hold your head up.
Yeah, I, I just don't want us to get confused about prior actions of, of, of variance. I think Mr. Twing stated that when you redo signs on your building, they have to bring in, into consideration any of them that are non-conforming. So a prior conformance, or a prior variance would still be looked at by this body when you redo other signs in the building, so that, that shouldn't be part of your considerations, my understanding. I don't know if that's correct.
The motion to postpone failed, so...
Right, and I'm speaking towards, you know, the next motion, which will likely pass, but it...
We don't know that.
It's just my, my problem with that sign is, is what we've been doing to signs close to downtown or on Woodward, or whether else, that, that height of sign is, is not needed, is garish. People know where you're at. I go there a lot, and you've got a good facility there, and I, I hope you continue to do well. But to, to have eastbound traffic looked over the top of the viaduct and say, oh yeah, there's the McDonald's, the wayfaring aspect of these signs are no longer necessary. So if there was an opportunity to pull that post down a little bit to something that is more in scale with the structure, I'd be happy to support something like that.
Okay, there's a first motion on the table by Ms. Douglas, supported by the mayor, to approve all variances. Is there any more discussion on that?
Yeah, I'll just...
Mayor.
Just I'll be supporting the, the motion. Totally understand, empathize, and agree in most regards about what we're trying to do with signs overall. I think that, you know, I believe in our staff and the professionalism, and for whatever reason, that's, it's not in there. It makes sense that there might have been a variance in the past, and, you know, driving that way with the viaduct there, and knowing how that turn lane is very small and narrow and short right after you get under the viaduct, having a little bit of heads up if people are headed there can, you know, in my opinion, help with, since it is a place where it does frequent a lot of traffic, you know, assist maybe even some traffic concerns. So I don't, I don't have an issue with it right now. I think it's a unique area. It's not on the list. I believe our staff would have a reason to put it on there, so I'll be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck with your renovations.
Thank you.
Hope you get a...
All right.
Wait, we should have put in Tuesday Happy Meal deals.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.